Good evening. My name is Jason Delisle. I'm President of Speedway Town Council. It is 7:01 on January 13th, and I call our meeting to order. We'll first start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll start off with introductions. To my right is our Town Manager Grant Kleinhans.
Hello.
Town Councilor Sarah Gardner.
Good evening.
Councilor Sean Harold.
Hello.
And to my left is our Town Attorney Ted Nolting.
Good evening.
Our Clerk-Treasurer Philip Faust.
Good evening.
Councilor Vince Noblet.
Good evening.
And our Vice President Nick Sturgeon.
Good evening.
First item is approval of minutes from the December 23rd, 2024 meeting.
I make a motion that we approve our minutes from the previous meeting.
I'll second it.
All right, any questions or comments regarding minutes? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving minutes from the December 23rd meeting, say aye.
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 Opposed? That passes 5-0. Next item is approval of memorandum of our administrative session of the Speedway Town Council on December 23rd.
Make a motion that we approve the memorandum of administrative session of the Speedway Town Council on December 23rd, 2024.
I'll second.
All right, any questions or comments? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving our memorandum of our administrative session of the Speedway Town Council on December 23rd, say aye.
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 Opposed? That passes 5-0. Next item is our approval of the memorandum of the executive session of the Speedway Town Council on January 7th.
Make a motion that we approve the memorandum of executive session of the Speedway Town Council on January 7th, 2025.
And I'll second that one.
All right, any comments? All those in favor of approving our memorandum of executive session of the Speedway Town Council on January 7th, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. Next item is election of our officers. So we will be electing our President and Vice President for 2025 of the Speedway Town Council. Do we have, we'll start with President first, do we have any nominations for President?
Yes, I will nominate Nick Sturgeon for President.
I'll second.
All right, any other nominations? So I'll close the nominations, and we will vote for President of, I guess we don't really need to vote, well, we'll go ahead and vote, right? So we'll go ahead and vote. I'll call all those in favor of Nick Sturgeon being our President for 2025, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. Congratulations, Nick.
Thank you.
Next is our Vice President. So I will open nominations for Vice President.
I'll make a motion for Jason Delisle.
I'll second that.
Vice President.
All right, any other nominations? Close nominations, and I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of Jason Delisle as Vice President for 2025, say aye.
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 That passes 4-0. I'll abstain from that. Okay, we'll go ahead and switch our seats here, just switch names.
The gavel stays behind.
Oh, yeah.
You took the demotion well.
The demotion.
The demotion.
Can just change those plaques.
Yeah, you might switch.
Your name.
Name. Thank you, thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is special events request for 2025 RUN 317, and we have Jeff Graves here to present.
Thank you. I also have Lieutenant Brisek from IMPD here. He handles all the police officers for this event. And I've got a couple maps here to just show you what we're proposing. So, thank you very much for having us again. Talk about RUN 317, 2025 event, looking at a possible new course this year, and new date. So, we're looking at the Sixth Annual RUN 317 Speedway on Thursday, August 21st. So it's about a month earlier than what we've done in the past. Start-finish line would be in the same exact spot on Gilman, on Main between Gilman and 14th Street, and that would be our post-race party area. The event brings in participants from all over the metro area to highlight downtown Speedway and the vibrant revitalization of the town. We had over 1,800 participants last year, so we had a record number. This year, we're expecting about 1,900. Again, we're proud to have the Lions Club as our charity partner for the event. After the event last year, we did a post-race survey, and we do it every year. And two glaring things came up from this post-race survey. Number one, Speedway got rated the best post-race party for the first time ever. That's usually Mass Ave, they like that area. And I'll tell you why I think Speedway got that, your Dora. Having that Dora and not having to cattle in the participants in a fenced-in area and corral them like that, they love that. So thank you for doing that. It was a real win for RUN 317 and for Speedway. It was great. So, the other thing, though, was the route. The route got a lot of negative because of the safety of the route. So, what happens, this is last year's map, we start here at 12th Street, come down, and when we get to 10th Street, we only have one lane of traffic we're running on. So they're coming down, and they're getting pushed into one lane of traffic, and you have cars going right next to you, all the way on 10th Street and then up Lynnhurst. So, for over a mile of the course, runners and cars are literally separated by cones. It only takes one runner to go outside the cones, or one car to accidentally come inside the cones, and we've got a problem. So, that is what we would like to try and fix. And we've also, you know, kind of clogged up this whole area of residents. So, with partnership with IMS, we are looking to redo the course. The new course over here, start in the same exact spot, come up to 16th/Crawfordsville, go on east, and then go into the IMS admin parking lot, and then run the whole way, keeping us off city streets, behind the grandstands, all the way up to Gate 8. We then come out of Gate 8, down Georgetown a little bit, shoot over 24th, down Auburn, come down to Crawfordsville, do a slight U-turn, come back and down Main. So with that, one, we're taking us off Main Streets, two, all these streets, we would look at having 100% closure, so we don't have cars running next to us. We'd affect a lot less area of residents up here than the big block that we did down there. By having, being on less city streets, and any streets that would have traffic would be a huge safety factor for us, to improve on that. Ron, you want to just talk about how we would close that off and what that would look like?
Yes, since we're running northbound on Main Street towards IMS, we would have to close 16th Street. And everybody right away, oh my God, we're closing 16th Street. What we would do is, we wouldn't close traffic, what we'd do is divert traffic. At 16th and Polco, if you were headed westbound on 16th Street, we would divert them southbound on Polco to 10th Street, and then they'd be free to go wherever they needed to go. On the other side of it, on the west side, if you're headed eastbound on Crawfordsville Road, you would be stopped at Lynnhurst, you couldn't go any farther east from there, you'd turn southbound on Lynnhurst and go down to 10th Street, and then cut across that way. So it's not stopping traffic, it's just diverting traffic a few blocks. And in that way, doing it this way, we're not boxing anybody into their neighborhood where they couldn't get out. So it's a lot smoother type traffic flow.
And with the route, in previous years, we had to close eastbound already. So we were already closing eastbound, now we're just asking to close east and westbound, and then diverting the traffic around, is what we're looking at. Questions on any of that?
First, get a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the request for 317.
I'll second.
Okay. I got a question for you. If you're going to close Crawfordsville Road at Lynnhurst and send those southbound, wouldn't there, are you going to have another officer at 16th Street? Because I would just immediately go to 16th Street.
We were just talking about that.
We were just talking about that. What we're going to do is, at 16th and, what is it?
Winton.
Winton. We're going to, so if people have to go down Main Street, they can go down Main Street, I'm sorry, down 16th Street.
16th Street.
They can go to Gilman, and then we're going to have an officer there. So you can either go back onto Crawfordsville, or you can turn right and go make your way down to 10th Street.
At Winton.
At Winton.
How about, I was, I was just going to ask, how long is the diversion?
So, last year, we were 50 minutes. This year, we're going to be about an hour and 10 minutes, the diversion will be. So about from 6:50 to about 8:09 is what we're looking at.
Is that true for Auburn as well?
No, Auburn would be less. That is for this whole stretch, to get all the participants here. Auburn, as soon as we start clearing people, Auburn will keep opening as we're clearing people as we go southbound.
Okay, and you think, what, half an hour maybe?
Of Auburn?
Yeah.
It will be more than a half hour. I would say more like 45 minutes for Auburn.
Okay.
Yep.
And part of the reason, I'm just thinking, you know, that's residential.
Yes.
People getting in and out, I guess we'll just have to be notified and make sure that...
The good thing about that is, that's towards the end of the race, and so the runners spread out. And so we have the course marshals and the officers understand that if there's a big enough gap, and it's safe to do, we allow people to cross.
Oh, okay, all right.
And with that, as far as notifications, we will, as we have in the past, we'll go literally door-to-door with flyers of anybody who's on the route, and we'll take our yard signs. This will all happen on Friday, August 15th. We'll take our yard signs, put them out along the route, and we'll work with Speedway TV to help get the information out about the road closures, like we have done.
Jeff, is there a minimum time that participants have? Is it a 16-minute mile, or is there a time?
Yeah, so it's basically a 20-minute mile.
Okay.
And it takes us about 10 minutes to get the event started, because we do it in waves. So that's why we say by 8:10, we'll be off of there.
Okay.
So, yeah.
And that helps spread them out also, so people can cross traffic.
Yep.
So Jeff, are you working with IMS for parking? Because Lot B, they're hardly putting anybody, we're, you know, right across Crawfordsville Road and 16th, right across from Roundabout, that whole area there.
Yep.
You know, because every year, we have a lot of people trying to park down Main Street, and they're going back in the neighborhood if we could get some of that parking there off of IMS, which would be centrally located anyway.
Vince, good point. I've not brought that up to them yet, but we sure can.
Sure.
They're looking for the marketing opportunities that this race brings them. We're looking to have Doug wave the green flag and have some other cross-marketing. But yes, the parking, absolutely, we'll ask IMS about that.
Yeah, we got, did we open up our parking lot last time, the one right there by Speedway Gas Station?
I don't believe we did. We could, there's no reason we couldn't. It would be great to have that, because parking is a problem. And if we can tell people where they can go.
Go into park, yeah.
Yep, that would be great.
So we own the improved parking lot east of the Speedway Gas Station.
That would be great, and that's an area they could get in and out, even when the race is going on, because it's not, they're not going to be affected, they could go eastbound and get out of there.
Is PRI going to work with you on the packet pickup?
Yes, we'll do packet pickup at PRI again.
Okay.
Yep, so they've been a great partner for that. So what we're looking for tonight is approval on the new route, the new date of August 21st, and then, as you guys have done in the past, is the waiving of the fees.
Any other questions?
Well, Vince, you made that motion. Do you want to amend your motion to include waiver of the fees?
I'll amend the motion to include the waiving of the fees.
I'll second.
Okay. Any last questions? I'll just, just one quick comment. So, I like that you guys do the feedback form after the race, too. I'll be curious to see, you know, feedback on the new.
And yeah, we're happy to share the survey right with you guys, and you can read all the comments and everything that they have to say.
Yeah, I think it's good that you're listening to questions, concerns about previous routes, and things people like, and things people want to improve. So, yeah, that's, I think that's great, great approach.
And I've done a course marshal the last two years, and I love it, just sitting out there, every, all the participants are just having a great time, and it's a family affair, see moms with strollers and little kids running along. So, really think this is a great event for the town of Speedway.
Thank you.
We'll get Philip to run with his wife.
They'll have a new baby probably already. You'll need it.
Stroller? Triple stroller.
I had a triple wife, I got rid of it.
All right, with that, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of the, approving the change in date, the course changes, and the waiving of the fees, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
You can put that right in front of Bob.
That's the point. Help with the deal.
All right, next on our agenda is Resolution Number 2025-01, a resolution declaring qualified publications. Grant?
Yes, so this is generally the first resolution that we approve every single year. We are required by state law to publish notice of things like public hearings, other official actions like bond notices, et cetera, and we have to identify those papers that we are going to publish in. So we always choose the Indianapolis Star and the Indianapolis Business Journal as those qualified publications. So this resolution denotes those two publications as that.
All right, can I get a motion, or is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 2025-01, a resolution declaring qualified publications.
I'll second it.
All right, any comments or questions?
The only other comment, we do post this stuff also on our website, so that's another source, but it is not need to be called out in this.
Okay. All right, hearing no more comments or questions, call for a vote. All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 2025-01, a resolution declaring qualified publications, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0. All right, item eight, approval of professional service fees proposal with RQAW for the final design of the wastewater expansion amendment number two for detailed design and bidding services. Grant?
Yes, thank you. So, before you this evening is a proposal from RQAW. If you didn't know, we are under an agreed order with IDAM. We have looked at alternatives over the past year with RQAW. We ended up choosing alternative number two of the three that we looked at. We're choosing a 1.5 million gallon storage tank and disc filter wet weather treatment system. So we now have submitted our PER to the state, to IDAM. We are now approving this design agreement so that they can put those plans and documents together for that project. That will include several different milestones listed under the scope of services. They'll do a 50% design document, and then get with us for input and discussion. Under number five, they will then proceed to what is called 90% design. Once we approve that, and they have incorporated those changes, they will then develop the final plans, construction documents, drawings, cost opinion, and specifications to assist us in that bidding process. The timeline for this project will be about 340 days total from the notice to proceed, which will probably be tomorrow. So we are realistically looking at end of, end of 2025, the 1st of January, give or take. The cost for these fees, all told, they are listed there in the description at the bottom, compensation summary. The total cost is $1,367,700, which represents 9.4% of the roughly $14.5 million construction cost. In the design engineering world, anywhere from 8% to 15% is typical. I think we got a pretty good deal. I was a little hard on RQAW and tried to get that cost down. This will require thousands of hours worth of work and review and meetings and documents, so this is not an easy process. If we approve this tonight, that work will start soon, be completed basically January of 2026. At that time, we will investigate financing alternatives, and then bid that out, and construction most likely will start in the summer of 2026. So I'll answer any questions that you might have at this point.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the project in front of us for the RQAW for the final design of the wastewater expansion amendment number two for the detailed design and bidding services.
I'll second. All right, any comments or questions?
Grant, maybe you could explain to the general public just exactly, because this is a million dollars just for the design.
Yeah.
So I don't think, understand why we are building this addition wastewater plant.
So we, we are being required by IDAM because we had, a couple of years ago, three stormwater overflow events, which is not a lot. I'm just going to be completely honest, there are communities around Indiana that have dozens of these. We're a larger community, we're in the Indy metro area, I think they're being a little harder on us, just to be frank. But this project is basically building a 1.5 million gallon tank that will absorb all that surcharge when we have heavy rains. Or imagine this snow, 12 inches of snow in the past week. If this all melted tomorrow, because we were at 65 degrees, the ground's saturated, that's all going to run off and cause issues. It's just the way life is. This tank will allow us to capture more of that, hopefully reducing our overflow events to zero. This is a pro, we already have a 1.5 million gallon tank, probably should have been designed for 3 million gallons 15 years ago. It wasn't, we'll live with the consequences and try to do this at this point. But it is a $15 million project. This is not cheap. None of this type of construction is cheap, and we're trying to navigate the difficulties of regulations the best that we possibly can. We did argue our case with them, and we actually believe we got the better alternative because of those arguments. So we'll, we'll continue working in that vein and try to get this done as effectively and cost-effectively as possible.
And just to point out, the other option was a 3 million gallon.
And it was nearly 20 million.
Yeah. So it's still...
20 million gallons, yeah, yeah, dollars, yes.
Yeah, so it could have been a little bit worse than...
It could have been. And when I said we argued our case, we argued that with this wet disc weather system, that we can actually treat water as it comes in, thereby allowing us to move the water more quickly and get it in and out of the plant, and they agreed with us on that. So that was a, that was a win for us, saving us about $5 million, give or take.
But the other thing on this, too, is, you know, so we don't make the same mistake of, well, we should have built something larger.
Yep.
What is the timeframe, or how long will this last for us?
For the design standard, we asked RQAW to look at, this should last us for the next 50 years, unless the tank blows up or something, which I can't imagine that would happen. But we don't have a lot of rapid growth, we don't have a lot of extra, we don't have a lot of extra flow in our system, because we don't have that growth. Our growths are not going to go high, this should, should handle us for the next, like I said, 40, 50 years.
But also will potentially meet future standards, because as IDAM...
Yeah. Unless they change something real significant, it should meet those standards, yes. That is one thing that I would pause on, because I can never predict, we can never predict what future standards may be in 20 years.
And it's the standards for the 10-year event, and how much...
All those kinds of, yeah, yeah. Treatment levels, contaminant, I mean, it's, everything is subject to change, basically annually. But it, we're pretty confident this is pretty good.
And just throwing out that, if we, what if we chose not to, right? What if we said no?
Well, we would then be in violation of our agreed order. We said we were working on this and trying to come up with a workable solution that we would fund and construct. They would take away our license to treat wastewater. So our choice then would be to send our wastewater to Indianapolis. Indianapolis's rate is well in excess of $45. We pay about 26.
Double, double our fees.
It's effectively a mandate that we have to do this.
Yeah, because we violated the terms of our permit and had those overflows, we didn't have a choice.
Right, so we have to.
And we tried to make the best situation out of this that we could.
Right.
Any other questions? If not, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the professional service fee proposal with RQAW for the final design of the wastewater expansion amendment number two for detailed design and bidding services, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes 5-0. All right, next item, approval of an agreement with Westler Engineering for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System, MS4 Professional Services. Grant?
So this is an annual agreement that we approve with Westler, who operates as our MS4 firm. They help us do all types of things, put down in the scope of professional services, including public education on stormwater, any training requirements for staff, conducting the annual required site inspection, and update of our pollution prevention plan, reviewing our mapping, assisting with the preparation of our annual report that's due every, basically first quarter of the year. This will cost $14,000, and that's pretty much the standard cost that we paid for several years with Westler. And they are trusted by our staff and do good work, so we recommend approval of this agreement.
All right, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to, for the approval of an agreement with Westler Engineering for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System, MS4 Professional Services.
I'll second it.
All right, any comments or questions? All right, hearing none, I will call for a vote of approval of an agreement with Westler Engineering for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System, MS4 Professional Services. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0. All right, next item is approval of amendment number one to task order number three for environmental on-call services with Westler Engineering. Grant?
Yes, so this is another agreement we typically do every year. This is an amendment to our task order that we have with them. They do various environmental engineering work for us, and this is a re-up or amendment of the next phase of this, in the amount of, not to, not to exceed $20,000.
$20?
It's 10, but the total of the amendment is 20, but it's only $10,000 more.
Okay.
Thank you for asking for that clarity, yep. So the total increase over amendment number one is $10,000. Yes, good catch.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion for the approval of amendment number one to task order number three for environmental on-call services with Westler Engineering.
A second. All right, any comments or questions? Grant, how did we do last year? Did we, I mean, as far as our spend with them?
We spent the $10,000 last year.
By when?
It was near the end of the year, so the amount is generally okay.
Okay.
It just depends on what work we have. It just depends on what work we have going on. We might have something that happens and, because this is an on-call, we only use it when we need to use it. We don't pay them the amount unless they actually bill against it.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you. Any other comments or questions? If not, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving amendment number one to task order number three for environmental on-call services with Westler Engineering, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes 5-0. All right, next, approval of a proposal for extension of pretreatment services with Asbury Water Technology. Grant?
So about six months ago, we had an employee, long tenured employee, who was in charge of our pretreatment program at the wastewater plant, took another job with another community. Since that time, we have retained Asbury to help our new pretreatment coordinator get up to speed. We used him for about four and a half months. Last year, Asbury, we are asking to extend this through March 31st of this year, so an additional three months at the cost of 2925 per month. We, we do need that. We feel we need that help as that new employee tries to get up to speed on the program. And what is pretreatment? Pretreatment is typically industrial users who have the capacity to dump chemicals into the sewer system. Doesn't mean they do it, but we still need to treat and pre-treat for that. To protect ourselves. Those chemicals can kill our bugs and our biology, which ultimately leads to our wastewater plant not working properly.
All right. All right, so I'll, I'll make a motion for the approval of proposal for extension of pretreatment services with Asbury Water Technology.
I'll second it.
Any comments or questions?
I got a question, Grant.
Yep.
Is, Asbury, are they going out to Allison's and our end-users, our customers that would be supplying? Are they working with those guys?
You know, I'm, I'm not 100% sure. I think our staff member is doing a lot of that with Asbury probably guiding him, if that makes sense. I don't know if they are actually going, well, pretreatment inspections, so yes.
So he'd be going, so Merrell Brothers, who had our last.
Merrell Brothers is yes. That is definitely one that we inspect regularly.
Are we inspecting them on a monthly basis, weekly basis?
So we require them to submit to us two different tests every single month. We then test the effluent coming out of their facility once a month. So we're getting three tests and that's a number higher than we used to get. I think we used to just get one a month from them.
Okay. That's all I got.
Any other questions? If not, I will call for a vote for approval of proposal for extension of pretreatment services with Asbury Water Technology. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0. All right. Next is approval of proposal from Atlas Geotechnical Consultants for the wastewater expansion project. Grant?
So this, this item actually is in connection to the design contract with Westler. Before we put in a 1.5 million gallon CSO tank, we need to make sure that the ground can support that much concrete, steel and equipment. So they will do some geotechnical services, testing that to make sure. Their fee for that work is $24,980 and this agreement will give them a notice to move forward so that we can start that phase of the project as well. We did amend this agreement. We put in our insurance terms, they're on page three of seven. So thanks Ted for reviewing that. I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Is there a motion? I'll make a motion to approve our proposal from Atlas Geotechnical Consultants for the wastewater expansion project.
I'll second.
Any comments or questions for Grant?
Is that, did they go off for bid or is this considered a service?
It, it is a service and what RQAW did was talk to a couple of different firms. This was the lowest and best price.
Okay. Just long we checked.
But we, we didn't bid it out specifically. They have the authority to do that because it is a service.
Okay.
And it's a very important service. This is something you don't want to mess up on.
Oh, yeah.
That leads to sinking buildings or sinking pads and millions of dollars to fix, so worth the investment.
So whatever they determine will have a potential impact.
On the design, yes. That's why it'll be the first step.
Okay.
PNC bill.
Is there any other comments or questions? All right, hearing none, I'll call for a vote of approval of proposal from Atlas Geotechnical Consultants for the wastewater expansion project. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed? All right, passes 5-0. Number 13, ordinance number 1404 and ordinance amending parking restrictions on 21st Street on our first reading. Grant?
Yes, so Brian, if you could bring up the map that you were provided. I hope that he has that. The map is attached to the ordinance. There we go. So this was brought to us by a resident who lives on Auburn Street regarding no parking that is currently there and causes some issues when it doesn't necessarily need to be there. So what I'll point to you on the map is that east of Auburn, basically there's currently no parking allowed on the north side or the south side. There's a reason there's no parking allowed on the north side because 21st Street shrinks down. It's really, really just a single lane road if you've ever driven down it. But there's this extra larger right-of-way portion there that is paved. So we have put in this ordinance to make that, it, it's currently no parking, to change that to parking besides the three days prior to the race, which is pretty standard on all the streets in this area. So the west side of Auburn, you'll notice the green circles. And, and the resident put this map together. It really made it easy for us. We just had to copy and paste it, so thank you. Those will have the no parking three days prior to the race. So in the blue circle, people can park there except for three days prior to the race and that's what the ordinance says. Now, we have this listed as proposed first reading. If the council is so inclined, you can, Ted, explain.
Yeah, unanimous consent to consider and then two-thirds majority.
To approve. And then it won't have to come back. If you want to, we can put it on the end of the meeting, end of the month meeting. But if we are comfortable with this, we have not heard complaints. This, to me, makes perfect sense. I know our police and code enforcement and everybody else felt like it was reasonable street, street department, so we're totally fine with this change.
Yeah.
Is there a motion for unanimous consent?
Yeah, absolutely. I want to make a motion in relationship to this parking situation and make it under unanimous consent for, that we can prove it on one read.
I'll second that. All right, any discussion?
Yes. I mean, I just want to state that this resident came and brought it to my attention. They live right up the street from me. And the reason being is that their front door is on Auburn and they have like three or four residents around them that park on Auburn and on both sides of the street. So if they put their car out there, it's been hit by vehicles traveling usually southbound that runs right into the back of the vehicles, damages. And we've had several vehicles along Auburn hit, just late night, people not watching where they're going. It's been, and also it's a hazard in relationship to kids playing on the street when you have a lot of vehicles. This will take off those vehicles in front of their property to the west and allow them to park their vehicles on, on that small section on the north side of their house. So it's a win-win for both and at that point in time. And I appreciate you guys' consideration on this.
Any concerns about doing the unanimous consent? All right. Then I will call for a vote for, on the unanimous consent motion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 None opposed. It is approved to be done in one reading.
So now you'll need to make another motion to approve the ordinance with a second by someone and then a vote.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 1404, which amends parking restrictions on 21st Street.
I'll second.
Any other further comments, questions or discussion?
The only reminder is that it does require a two-thirds vote or the ordinance would not be approved because we've kind of waived having a second ordinance, if that may, or second reading, if that makes sense.
I will just add, I had the same resident come to me and express their want for this and I, I fully support it. So if there's no other comments, I will call for a vote to approve ordinance number 1404 and ordinance amending parking restrictions on 21st Street. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Item 14, ordinance number 1405 and ordinance amending the town code of Speedway, Indiana, Section 2.66.010 relating to the personnel policy manual. Grant?
Thank you. So I will try to make this as brief as required. I have provided you a summary of all the proposed changes in the personnel policy manual. I know we did share this with the council on email and discussed it a couple of weeks ago. There are about six changes. I'm not going to go over every single one of them, but there are changes to overtime, compensatory time policy, a new flexible time policy for salaried employees who work extra events and extra nights and evenings and weekends. We have several employees that do that. Some changes in the holiday pay and floating holiday language, personal time off or PTO policy updates, vacation leave policy updates. And then under that one specifically, this one I do want to point out, when an employee is terminated, retires, resigns or leaves the organization, we have changed it such that any vacation time used prior to the ending of the employment will be deducted from the total hours available for payout. That's just one of those things that should have been corrected years and years ago. We also have a new reemployment policy. If someone does retire and wishes to come back at some point in the future, and then we've added a remote work policy that can be used sparingly. I want to make it clear that our employees work a majority of their time at town hall or their station, but if eligible and they get approval, they can from time to time work remotely. We think it's a flexibility thing that we need to stay current. Everybody does that. We're going to do it a little bit. I think last year we worked two days remotely because of weather. Or if you remember the.
What election?
The eclipse, the eclipse. The election, we had the day off, but the eclipse because of traffic and other, so anyway. I'll answer any questions that you might have. We can do this same way. If you, if everybody's okay, we can call for unanimous consent and approve on the first reading or we can approve first reading and then put it back on your agenda at the end of the month. There's no necessary, necessary to hurry it along unless you just feel confident with it.
Is there a motion for unanimous consent? I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 1405 on unanimous consent.
I'll second it.
All right, any other comments or questions or discussion, at least on the unanimous consent side of things? Okay, hearing none, I will call for a vote that, for unanimous consent on ordinance number 1405. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None opposed? And, okay, so that passes 5-0. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 1405, which amends the town code of Speedway, Indiana relating to the personnel policy manual.
I'll second.
So any comments, questions for Grant on the manual or anything related?
Grant, did you call out that the street department doesn't get, you know, far as, they've been working overtime here and in their snow conditions, they're, they're not working from home?
Oh, I didn't know that.
I mean, I didn't know that.
You know, it's. We, we appreciate their sacrifice. It's, it's one of those things that I know they don't want to do it, but it's something that has to be done. Now, I want to make it clear, they do get overtime for that work, so.
That's good.
I, I realize it's time away from family and, and that kind of thing, but they, they do get paid overtime.
Right.
And they love doing it, I've been told.
Yeah.
Just think, Grant, this, I think it's great to put some structure around some of these things and, and make it, you know, very clear what, what the town stances are on some of these things. So I think great work and appreciate you guys going through and cleaning up some of the, the policies.
Well, I, I will say, I know Phillip and his office, they do payroll, so they, they had some input on this. I know Nikki did some research. There, there's a whole team that, that is working to put this together. So it's good to see us work together and, you know, have some give and take and changes and additions and deletions just to make our policies clearer and a little more effective.
Yeah.
So thank you to the team.
Yes, everyone.
I, I would just want to make one comment on like the flexible policy and I think we've talked about this over the months as we've been contemplating this, that this is something that could be taken away. So it's, it's, it's an accommodation to the idea that we know that certain employees get hit, and again, we're talking about salaried employees, so these are people that don't get overtime. There's certain people that maybe will get hit disproportionately one part of the year, but this is by no means an entitlement. It's completely, has to be approved by their supervisor. And if, if it starts to get out of hand, then it's something that the council might need to revisit taking away because certainly our general expectation is that salary employees, you know, you don't get extra time or extra rounding points all the time just for, because you have to work a little bit extra one week or the other, so.
Yeah.
If there's no other, or further discussion, I'll call for a vote for ordinance number 1405 and ordinance amending the town code of Speedway, Indiana, Section 2.66.010 relating to the personnel policy manual. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That passes 5-0. Next item on the list is approval of town manager compensation for 2025. So for this, in the salary ordinance, approval potentially for increase as well as a bonus for meeting, Grant, meeting all of his goals and objectives for the year, which the council feels that you did meet all your objectives. And we have decided to offer you, or Grant, or approve the 5,000 bonus for the year.
I'll make a motion that we approve the town, that's town manager, get approved for his $5,000 bonus for 2024.
I'll second.
So any comments, questions, discussion?
No.
Just on behalf of the council, Grant, thank you, you know, very much for the hard work that you put in last year. And I know especially part of the year was doing a little bit of extra duties until Carmen got hired on. We'll also appreciate those little extra duties until we find her replacement. But I know it, it's made our jobs as a council easier with the timely communication and the detail of information that we receive. And I know it's, you know, can be challenging with the, the five of us and our different schedules working and, but really appreciate the work that you've done for the council and for the town.
Thank you.
If there's no other comments or questions or discussion, I'll call for a vote for approval of the $5,000 bonus for Grant for 2024. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes 5-0. Next item on the agenda is approval of claims and utility adjustments. Phillip?
Just have a request for claims this time and that spans the period of December 20th, 2024 through January 8th, 2025. It's on 14 pages and totals $1,500,000. It's on fourteen pages and totals $1,510,538.65.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion for the approval of claims and utility adjustments.
Any comments or questions for Phillip?
I'll second that motion.
Oh, sorry. We do have the second by Jason. Any comments or questions? All right. Hearing none, I'll call for a vote for approval of our claims. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Passes five zero. All right. Reports from our department supervisors. First up, Cheryl McElroy.
Hi, council. I'll keep it short tonight. I put out lots of, let me say lots, that's not great, but lots of information lately on the website and on Facebook. So if anyone wants a summary of that, you can find that in the newsletter that I send out now monthly, as well as under news and announcements on the website. The couple of events that I'm currently working on, a state of the town, that will be Tuesday, February tenth. Still working out details on that. Movies on Main, I'm still, I'm working on that. That will begin again in April through November. And then the Rockin' on Main, I've had so many requests already and people wanting to be a part of that. So I'll start soliciting for sponsorships and working on those details here shortly. And that is May twenty-third. So that's all I have.
Any questions for Cheryl?
No. Just thank you again, constant communication, especially as of late. You have a lot on your plate, but thank you for that, constant communication with us as well, just things. I know you get inquiries outside of work, so thank you for that and just being responsive and receptive to those, even when you're not technically on working hours. So I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you, Cheryl. Next up, police with Chief Upchurch.
Good evening, council. First of all, I'll start with our staffing. Officer Elise Hernan successfully completed the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy on December thirteenth, 2024. At this point, Elise has moved into our field training program, which is probably about four months. So she's progressing well, though. We have also made a conditional offer of employment to one of our lateral entry candidates. He has undergone his physical and psychological testing. We're awaiting the results for those tests. And then those will be submitted to perf if he passed those tests. And, but with that, we've exhausted really our lateral entry candidates. So on February fifteenth, we're going to start an open testing for those officers who do not have the academy, which means they have very little experience. So those folks that we hire, we have two openings at this point with the departure of Officer Stevens and Officer Dahlke. So those candidates, when they're chosen, will have to go to the academy, which is sixteen weeks. And then we have about another four months of latter. So the first year, pretty much eaten up with training on those new candidates that we hire. So moving on from that, we begun the process of our year-end report for 2024. We, good news is, we have demonstrated a decrease in all of our major crime categories for this year. And our officers have responded to 27,132 calls for service in 2024. They issued 6,573 traffic citations, and they responded to 747 crashes. And that's all I have.
Any questions for chief? All right.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief. Next up is fire, Chief Fishburne.
So, council, happy new year. We too will be getting our two recruits from the recruit school here in two weeks. So we'll be putting them, you know, in the ranks. They will then, at the end of the recruit, the recruits that they're in school with right now will be doing their EMT portion. Both of ours are already EMTs. So at the end of that EMT portion, they'll go back for a week that's family oriented. It's called Hell Week, but they'll go back to doing some live fire stuff. And we'll put them back on educational leave for that week. But in two weeks, we will be fully staffed, so knock on wood. We have closed our application process, test for applicants. We sent a notice out today letting them know that here in the next two or three weeks, we'll be having them sit for our aptitude portion. Then we'll just go to agility, oral interviews, so that we can create a new hiring list. About sixty-one applicants, because we extended it and did not require them to be an EMT. So not as many as we would like, but better than what we had expected. The entire department will start the physical process. At the end of the month, we'll do our blood draws. Then in February, we'll be scheduling all of our annual department physicals. Our evaluations are complete, and just for the new council, our evaluations, when Grant and Nikki kind of instituted that, our officers evaluate their five, you know, back step guys, engineers. Then the battalion chief evaluates the captain and the lieutenant. And then Chief Milhorne and I evaluate the battalion chiefs, Johnny and Christie. The officers then meet with their firefighters to go over that. The battalions oversee it. So there's a lot of discussion. All of that's been completed. And it just covers this. We're able to put it in their file. And Chief Milhorne and I can then look at any issues and get with the officers if those become. Just kind of wanted you to know a little bit about that process. So with that said, there's a couple of things I'd like to say as a resident. First of all, I want to thank the street department. You know, two big snows. A lot of people don't know what that process entails, and I really think they did a good job. I'm sure that there were isolated incidents where people don't think they did a good job. But when you look at the streets the schools are on, that they've salted, those are clear. You know, some cross streets aren't clear, but the main thoroughfares are. And I don't think people understand that process sometimes. Because sometimes we get stray calls that come our way that should have gone to Rob. And I wouldn't want to live in his shoes during a snowstorm like the two that we just had. So I want to commend those guys. I'm also really happy to live where our police department, public safety, but especially with, you know, Chuck's stats that crime is down in every category. That's kind of refreshing as a resident. And I want to commend you guys for doing the wastewater expansion. I don't ever want to lose our utilities, although Indianapolis would love for us to pay them twice as much as we pay now. And will probably always be a little tough on us when it comes to regulatory stuff because they'd love to see us fail. So I want to commend us for putting the investment in that. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief. Next up, park and rec.
So Tammy is ill today, so I'm going to read one thing that she prepared. I don't necessarily have a report. I know that with the heavy snows, you know, we had over twelve inches over the past week. There was some concern brought forward with some emails, some Facebook posts about the walking paths and trails not being cleared. And I'm talking about the B and O trail, the trails, the asphalt trails in both Leonard and Meadowwood. We have not removed snow on those for a decade or more. The reason for that is that there is a state statute, and I'm not going to read this full thing. This will be posted on the website so people can better understand. But Indiana's recreational use statute, contained in IC section fourteen dash twenty-two dash ten dash two, provides that landowners who do not charge a fee for the use of their property for recreational purposes such as swimming, camping, hiking, sightseeing, or any other purpose, do not assume responsibility for injuries. Therefore, we don't remove the snow, because when you remove snow, there's an assumption that it is safe, if that makes any sense. So we do not do that. We also don't put salt down because there is liability with animals consuming that salt. And I'm talking about dogs and pets, so we don't, we don't put that down. I know it might seem hard to understand, but it, there is a reason and a purpose behind that. It's not just because we don't want to do it. The park staff that we do have also, they actually drive plow trucks. So for them to do that and then have to clear trails that are used for recreational purposes would not be feasible time-wise. So I just wanted to point that out. If anyone has concerns or the council has questions, just let me know and we can, we can talk through that. I do have just two quick items. Our resident academy, our third session, which is kind of amazing, just closed our application process. We received twenty-two applicants. We have admitted all twenty-two of them into the program. And what is resident academy? It is a five-week program where the town meets with residents who are interested in our operations to show them what those operations entail. So we have five different modules. We go from the administration, which includes communications, economic development, clerk treasurer, and town manager, to help them understand what we do. Then we go to the parks and the streets together. Then we go to the water, then the wastewater, and finally, public safety. Our department heads and their seconds teach those classes. They give presentations. They do field activities. And it's been, it's been a real success. We've had, I think our first class had thirty-four, last year had thirty-one, this year only had twenty-two. So we're starting to maybe see, maybe people are interested, aren't, are already through the class. So we'll decide next year if we do it again in 2020, whatever that would be, twenty-six. But it's been a successful program. There's been a couple purposes for that. We're trying to educate, we're trying to inform, and we're also trying to create advocacy on the behalf of the town, because I'm not on Facebook all day long, right? Cheryl's not. You aren't. Lots of people ask a lot of questions. If we have a hundred people in the community that are more informed, we have actually seen those people get on and say, well, that's not the way, or this is what... And that's been really nice to see. I saw this in Brownsburg when I did it. I saw it in Centralia, Illinois, when I did it there. It's just a good way to get buy-in and understanding of town operations. So that class will then be presented with their graduation certificates at your first meeting in April, and it's always a good time. I've also completed ten out of eleven evaluations. I'm still trying to get the fire chief's done, not because he's difficult, not because he's in trouble. It's just been the holidays caught up, and we actually have it on Wednesday, chief, correct? That's a great process. I always try to set up three to five goals for each of our department heads. I then email those out to those employees, so they have reminders. We then check base in June and July, and then we do these annual reviews at the end of the year. Believe it or not, we didn't necessarily do full performance evaluations four years ago. So it's, it's been a nice change. That's all that I have for my report this evening. I'll be quiet. I spoke a lot tonight, so I apologize.
All right.
I just wanted to ask, Grant, on the B and O trail, I know, what are other communities doing? Like the Monon, and is this standard policy for all the state?
It's pretty standard policy. Now, the Monon, I'm not sure, because that is a significantly higher-use trail. They also use that, I think, as multimodal transportation. People using our trailer are using it for recreation.
Right.
But most communities around us do not remove snow from those recreational trails.
Right.
We didn't in Brownsburg and...
But they'd be nothing to stop an individual who wants to cross-country ski, you know, straight down there from that.
Yeah.
There's no liability, you know, for...
There shouldn't be, but you just never know.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for Grant? All right. We'll jump back up to public works with Rob Wetnite.
Oh, I jumped ahead and did my report. I apologize.
You were on a roll.
I was thinking it was almost over.
Tammy going right on.
Wastewater treated one hundred and nineteen million gallons of water in December. Did some snow removal there, because they always have to walk to get samples, so they have their own plow trucks. So they do, they plow overnight, and we'll salt it. They got their skater system back up and running, new system installed. He's conducting interviews for night shift operator this week. And then he's preparing for his I D M report for this year, which he has to have it done by April, so... And then water, they did sixty-seven million gallons of water, plant maintenance, water main breaks, couple valves leaking, so they've been busy as well. And obviously, with the street department, we've been plowing snow, fixing, doing repairs on vehicles that break down and using a lot of salt, so not to mention patching potholes in between all that, too.
Rob, if you don't mind, could you comment on the new vehicles that we have approved, purchasing after bidding them out?
We approved the, got approved for the two full-size Kenworth salt trucks, new beds, stainless steel beds. The beds that we have now were here when I started, over twenty-eight years ago. We just put them on a new chassis, put them on a new chassis. Well, they've pretty much lived their livelihood. Time to pay now. New stainless steel bed should outlast the next superintendent, to be honest with you. So then you're just buying a cabin chassis for a good while. A new one-ton truck, stainless steel bed on it as well, diesel. That'll, salt spreader will go in that, too. We have a salt spreader for that already. So just keeping the fleet up. I mean, they're expensive vehicles, but they do last a long time, especially the beds. I mean, because you can reuse them over and over again. Chassis, just they're, instead of spending $300,000 each, $125,000, so that's all I have.
Thank you, and to the street department for, you know, just amazing, getting the snow removed out in timely manner, being out there. I had one complaint that you addressed real quickly, so appreciate that as well. So I know it's not easy on you guys, and it's much appreciated.
The guys know it's a kind of thankless job at times, because, you know, you get people that are happy with you and the next minute, you got somebody else that's screaming at you for plowing over their sidewalk. It is, it's just part of, part of what we do. We do the best we can. We try to keep everybody safe as we can. They're in the big snow. We thought, man, we got it licked now, quit snowing for like an hour. Everything was looking good. Here comes another four inches. So every time you think you got it licked, sometimes you don't, so...
How's the level of your salt?
We're good. I mean, we probably used close to a hundred and twenty-five, one-fifty tons so far this year, so...
How much you got left? You have enough to make it to March?
I got, I got plenty left. See, what we don't use every year, I stockpile. So four hundred tons a year is what I order. This year, I had so much, I didn't even order any. I mean, I had over eight hundred tons. That's two years' worth of salt. So if we run through that, we're in trouble.
Let's hope not.
Have a good evening.
All right. Since Grant's already given his report, we'll move on, and we'll go to councillor reports. Councillor Sarah Gardner.
Yes, just a few things. I wanted to thank Jason specifically for last year's service. Can't imagine all the work going into being president, so I appreciate, again, thankless job, right? With all you have going on, work, kids, busy life. So this is a lot of hours you put in, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Same with you, Nick. I know, again, you're right there with them a lot of the time and then switch and roll. So appreciate you stepping up. And again, it's, it's a lot of time. I don't know if people realize the time that goes in. It's not just this, right? This is kind of the highlight of our week, so, a month. So a lot of time to put into this. And so, and again, just knowing that all of us have the interest of the town at our heart. That's, that's what our goal is. So thank you guys for your service for that. Piggyback off everyone, again, with the street department. And again, just wanted to commend the schools as well. Everyone who pitched in to get the kids safely to school. It was ama, I mean, it was unreal walking my kids to school. It was perfectly clear. It was unbelievable. So thank you for everyone who has a hand in that. I know it's not easy. And then, again, just speaking about helping residents, I just saw a ton of people positively wanting to help each other with the snow. Again, I haven't seen this type of snow in a long time. So seeing neighbors coming out, you know, it's, again, it's, you're kind of waving at each other. People have snow blowers and, you know, I had one guy just go down our whole street. Like, how cool is that to just jump out, help each other out, look out for each other? If you see a house that wasn't plowed, people are knocking on the door. I saw a bunch of high school kids with shovels. I'm like, I love that, right? Like, getting out and helping each other, I feel like that is what makes us such a great community is we actually care about one another. We know each other, right? We're checking on each other. So thank you just to everyone who was helping each other out. And I know there's maybe a program in place, again, residents are taking upon themselves, so that if you do need help and you maybe don't have the financial means, a way that residents... financial means, a way that residents can know that and be able to step in and go, oh yeah, there's a house right there that needs help. And residents can just jump in and help. So again, I just commend our town for jumping in and helping each other when we can. So that's pretty much what I have. I did say, I got an email from a resident, again, about the trails. Great question. I didn't know why they weren't plowed either. So I, again, I think if you have a concern, email it. Email it to any of us, all of us. That way we know what is going on, or what concerns you have. Again, I think we try to stay off Facebook for many reasons. But do email us, because then we can address those and, and try to see, get an answer, because I didn't know the answer that Tammy provided. So I think that's really helpful, and a good way to get an answer. So that's all I have.
Councillor Sean Harold.
Yeah, honestly, a lot of the same for me. So, you know, thank you so much to the streets and the Parks Department. It sounds like several Parks Department team members are helping out as well. I know Friday night, I was coming home late from a, my son's football game in the snow, which should have been canceled. But I saw, I saw our trucks out there. And it, you know, I definitely feel for those guys, you know, spending time away from home and out there, helping us all out. So thank you for that. Same with police and fire. I know you guys don't get the opportunity to not have to go out in that snow. And I really appreciate you guys and continuing to go out there and protect us. So big thank you there. Again, if you can get out and help shovel and, 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 you know, snowblow your neighbor's yard, or not yard, their driveway and their sidewalks, please do so. I know, you know, I had someone able to get out and do my dad's driveway the other day before I could get there. And can't tell you how much that meant to him. And he, he's talked about it all week. So, so yeah, just be good neighbors. Continue to do that, like we do in Speedway. Take care of each other. Again, Jason, thank you so much for everything last year. I thought you did just an amazing job leading us through, through 2024. Nick, have all the trust in you for this year. So excited to see all the great things that, that we're gonna do in '25. And that's it.
All right. Councillor Vince Nublet.
Just got a couple of things. I would thank the council for passing the request from homeowner there at 21st and Auburn. It's gonna make the street a lot safer and definitely make their life a lot easier from that standpoint. But again, Auburn is a major thoroughfare ever since Georgetown Road shut down. So we always have concerns about the speeding that takes place on the street. And again, it's, it's a few bad apples that, you know, cause everybody the problem from that standpoint. But I think that all in all, I, I think, you know, our police department has shown a great deal of concern and, and also really legitimate hard work in order to keep those stats going the right way. In Marion County, it's unheard of, you know? Again, you have schools, you have the police department, a great fire department. I, I don't know, you know, why Indianapolis doesn't take the lead from us, you know, in terms of, because, you know, I think that those guys, you gotta get their priorities set. And I think our police and fire department do have that, and, and all of our staff. I mean, we're small enough that we know what's going on. And it shows up when, by the schools that we, we educate, a lot of kids that didn't grow up here, you know? And, but they want to go here in order to get that chance at a higher education. And it's important that we, we continue that tradition in providing not only a strong education, but a strong public safety environment, and a friendly environment, a neighborhood environment. So hopefully, we can continue doing that. And I look forward to 2025. Thank you.
Thanks. Vice President Jason Delisle.
Just two quick things. One, I did want to say, Grant, thank you for meeting the objectives that we set forth in your contract. And that bonus was included in your contract as an incentive. And we just really appreciate your focus on completing those objectives. Also, want to let you know that we're going to communicate your 2025 objectives soon, too. That's, that's a to-do list on our side, and we'll get those to you soon. So just thank you for everything in 2024. Truly appreciate that. Also, congratulations to Nick, our new president, and looking forward to serving the town in 2025. Thank you.
Thanks. Just a couple of things, you know, just echo on the, during the weather to police and fire. I know it's not easy working the road when it's snowing out. And I know, from what I hear from some on the department, that I know there's a lot of crashes worked over during that time. And from past experience, I know it's not fun. That's why I don't like the snow anymore. But the big thanks to them, as well as Dr. Trebly for getting the quick notice on the school cancellation and the delay out. Not waiting until 6:00 in the morning was really nice. Kids were able to sleep in and, and all of that. But I think that, that timeliness on getting those notices out is probably very much appreciated from others in the community. Also, want to, you know, just take the, the moment to congratulate Governor Braun, Lieutenant Governor Beckwith, AG Rokita for being sworn in today as the new administration's coming in. At the state level, as well as Anthony Scott, who's the super, new superintendent for the state police, had the opportunity to go see their, the change of command ceremony today and got to reconnect with a lot of my former colleagues there. But just hopefully, now session's in full gear. As I mentioned the last time, there's a lot of potential impacts to local taxes. So we'll be keeping a sharp eye on those things. And, you know, one, Jason, thank you for your leadership last year. You know, sitting there kind of on the sidelines and, and learning. But thank you for that. And the council for your confidence in electing me president for this year. I'm gonna do my best not to let you guys down and the town down, and look forward to a very successful 2025. And with that, our first meeting of 2025 is adjourned at 8:17.